Okay. We're getting started then, so I'd like to call to order this meeting of the committee of the whole for February 28th, 2022. So I'd like to call to order this meeting of the committee of the whole for February 28th, 2022, and the motion to actually ask if there are any limits.
No later items, the chair and the bill.
Okay, thank you. The mill items and all the promotion to appropriate agenda, so. Exactly, thank you, all in favor? Any votes? That's Gary. No further motion for group, the prior minutes from February 14th, please. Move and seconded, any questions? No, all in favor? Any votes? That's very soft. So straight on the business, we have two items, the first is the hike and bike access update for Riverside Villas options. And we have a report attached, I will turn it over to the director. Services, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair, are you able to hear me clearly?
Um, alright, we can hear you, but it's quite low.
Okay, how does that sound?
That's good, yeah.
Good?
Well, do what?
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. Town staff have completed an inventory of all the accesses to the hike and bike path within town limits. A map showing the locations with pictures has been attached to the report. In regards to improvements that could be completed at the hike and bike path entry into Riverside Villas, the following options can be taken. Their, uh, town staff could add signage with no gate, as long as there's no gate proposed, uh, to the hike and bike path. Although I did want to point out that since the previous meeting, the strata has now put up a new sign at the hike and bike path entrance, as well as the vehicle entrance to the strata that reads, "Private property, enter at your own risk." This was not approved by the town and it, it deters people from entering, which is not the purpose or the intent of the right-of-way agreement. For this reason, the sign should be removed. The wording of a new sign could read something along the lines of pedestrian access only between dawn and dusk, but there should be no reference to private property, as that clearly deters people, especially with the words, "Enter at your own risk." Uh, the town could offer snow clearing in this scenario for just the pathway and, and purchase and install a sign, a new sign at both the vehicle entrance into the strata and the hike and bike entrance for the cost of $200 to $300. Another option could be adding signage with a gate to the hike and bike path. This would be, need to be a solid gate that matches the vinyl fencing height. The costs are estimated at around $2,000. Could be on spring hinges, so it automatically closes behind the person opening it. A sign could be ordered in this scenario, uh, for both the gate location and the vehicle entrance. The town could cover the cost of the sign. The town could not offer snow clearing in this scenario and the gate installation costs should be covered by the strata. And the third option could be to close the access altogether and have the strata pay for the legal requirements and any gates and signers that, that they feel, um, are required. So with that, the recommendation by staff is that staff be directed to install and purchase signage, new signage that is, for the hike and bike path entry, which would speak to limiting access to pedestrians during the daytime only. And that staff provides snow clearing dependent on if the strata decides to install the gate or not. Thank you.
Thank you, that's, uh, any questions or comments? That's a great, thank you, Chair, and Tamila. Um, I guess more of a comment, I mean, I'm, I'm more or less on, on board with the recommendation. Um, I think, you know, with the concerns for safety and those sorts of things. You know, I don't think a sign or no sign or a gate or no gate is going to deter people from going into a neighborhood who shouldn't be there or have, you know, ill intentions, I mean, people walk through my back alley, up and down my street all the time, I think that's just, just going to happen regardless. Um, as far as the, the gate or no gate though, do we have an intention with the strata would like to do in that regard?
Uh, through the chair, no, I don't believe there's in, any indication there and, and they've put the sign up now, so. I'm not sure, yeah, I'm not sure what their plan is, I haven't spoken with them since the, the meeting.
Are we able to pass the motion without knowing that? I mean, can we have it be one or the, one or the other, I guess, depending on like gate or no gate, but we put the sign up kind of thing? Like, I don't need to make the decision about the gate for that. That's up to the strata, they might have that cost.
Yeah. Sorry, through the, through the chair, yeah, that's exactly correct, really the discussion for, for council is, is in regards to the signage and if they, if council wishes to pay for the signage, um, or snow clearing, I guess snow clearing is dependent on the gate or not. But then there's also the question about closing the access altogether also is an option, so, thank you.
Great. That answers questions, you know? Yes. Okay, thank you, Councilwoman.
Um, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, for myself, I'm not sure if we're, have enough information to make a decision today, but I'll discuss him with the strata first, but for myself, I want to encourage people to use the hike and bike path and that's why this was created in the first place. So I would not favor a summer gate whatsoever, I want visibility to remain and I want people to feel welcome to use that pathway. But keeping that in mind, I also respect that the pathway goes through private property, uh, that it's bordered on the other side by private property, so I think some better signage saying, you know, you are entering private property, please remain on the path. And I also think that we should in our budget have public works include, uh, painting and actually paint the path all the way up to, I believe, does it go all the way up to Meadows or just to Red Wing Place? I'm guessing that there be given this particular strata that their concern ends in Red Wing Place, looking at the picture. So if we were to paint, um, basically like, like a crosswalk, that width, from hike and bike path down to Red Wing Place and with a sign of each saying, this is, you know, you are, access to the hike and bike path, you are, um, near private property or whatever, where you may be, please respect private property and stick to the path, you know, the, the market path. And, and liberals, I would rather spend the money on the paint to do that. Uh, in terms of the snow removal, I would be against that, simply because, um, I'd like you to start doing mine. You know, if you're going to start doing private property, yeah, come and do mine. Or anybody else in town. I don't think that that's where tax, uh, extra time or staff should be put with people. Um, that's basically my thoughts on it. I, I know that the report goes into all of the different entrances, this discussion probably dealt with Red Wing Place more. But I think there, there are some things that can be done to, to work with the people that are there made it that I, I do understand the concerns, but I'm not prepared to give up on that subject.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I, I agree with a lot that Councilwoman Addus had to say, I think, you know, early on, 30 years ago, when this access was done, uh, there weren't a lot of access points to get on there. Now there are a lot of access points, but there's also a lot more population in that at the town than there used to be. So I'm not in favor of closing that. Um, I'm in favor of the signage, but I'm wondering why we would say pedestrian only. It's a hike and bike trail. You can, you could say that, you know, you could ask that people dismount and walk their bikes on that portion of the right-of-way. Um, but I think pedestrian only is short-sighted, if it's a hike and bike trail, I think they should be allowed to walk their bikes up to get it, to get to the trail. Um, and I'm against the snow removal part as well, I mean, there's other right-of-ways around that go over or go through private property and, I don't want public, you know, if we set that precedent, we're going to have a public works mowing somebody's lawn, because the right-of-way goes, goes through their lawn and, uh, they don't want to mow it anymore, so I, I think that's short-sighted. Uh, I like the idea of painting, uh, the pathway, so people know where the pathway actually is and just because they get out onto some pavement that they can't go willy-nilly, it's down the center where the right-of-way is, those are my notes.
Yeah, thank you for that. Councilor Price? Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, for the other, the town property access points, are we, um, providing snow removal there? Raptor to the director, or is that?
Yeah, the director.
Uh, yes, you are, to, to the public access.
I mean, I think because we want to maintain public access, it makes sense, I mean, if they're, you know, going down the path anyways, if they just got to turn up and clear a little area, so that we can make sure that the public has access to that, I, I mean, I find the snow removal, I think that's the cost of the, in the town, and that basically, you know, an extra minute of snow all the time, it probably makes sense. My opinion on that. Um, and it's a little, little bit off topic, but for the marsh access, just because that's quite near, is there a reason that it's pedestrian only, because it legislated that there can't be, I know you can't have motor access there, I, I did see that on the sign when I was going by today, but it's there. I know the gate prevents you from taking a bicycle, but there, there are reasons other than the gate that you couldn't take a bicycle through there? Which director would work to answer that one?
The motor access is supposed to be for the whole dyke, uh, there's, there's not supposed to be any motor access along the dyke. Um, now you're, you're asking about the marsh trail, that's going through private property and there's, oh, sorry.
That was the number one.
The number one, yeah.
I could, I could speak to that if you want, Sean, the, that, that access is through the crown land, like, it was the Fortis, Fortis right-of-way, I'm not sure if it's Fortis right-of-way through that area, but, I mean, I believe you could probably ride a bike through there, it's just a little bit tricky, that's all, and you, I think you got to kind of maneuver your bike through the wood fence to try to get it through, it's sort of like a staggered fence, but, um, yeah, you could take a bike through there technically.
So if we wanted to open that up, say, to alleviate some of the pressure on the red lane and access point potentially, would, who would have to reconfigure that gate to make it easier for bicycles to get through, say a stormwater or something?
Director of Operations have a better idea on, on sort of maintenance measures in the, like, along the river channel?
Yeah, we maintain and look after that whole trail, it's bumpy and then even, do you want people going through there as one of the bike accesses, I don't know. Walk biking, yeah.
Um, Councilwoman?
Is there an opportunity for us to improve that access? Like, is that something we should be looking at to make it more, A, visible and B, for lack of a better word, safer, not as dangerous now, but more walkable and, and for storms and residents?
We, we could improve it, uh, we just have to put some money into this, it's more of a natural habitat area and we're just trying to keep it that way, that's, that was the original intent. So, now with all the other pedestrian accesses that we have, along all those subdivisions, um, there's, if, if people were to bike, they could bike a little further and go through one of the public accesses, though I think personally, but, um, uh, the, we call it the Forbes Trail and it's, it's, um, it's mostly just a natural trail.
Okay, thank you. There it is. I was hoping Director could answer.
Um, I got a few thoughts, nothing, probably lamb or anything in particular, that marsh trail, I don't think I'd be in favor of moving that out of bicycles and it's because it is a winding trail, which has lots of hidden trees and stuff in there, you really have to open it up. And somebody whipping through there on a mountain bike, or even a motorbike, which does whip up and down, bike now, and I think you're better to leave it, just, just because of that, it, the hiking bike, you can see a long way. They can see bicycles coming that one, you, you just can't. Um, as for, the, uh, recidivillas, I don't think, I, I think we should keep the access, I don't think there should be a gate there. I think a gate is, is going to be limiting the type of access there, I would be in favor of of having the same type of access that you have on Trail One, so that it is pedestrian only through there. But then the problem you're going to have with that is it could be people that are, you, you know, that have, uh, mobility issues that are using scooters that wouldn't be able to get through there as well, and a gate could be a problem for those type of people as well. The signage, I, I don't think putting a timeline on there, that you're walking by there and it's dark, you're not going to be able to see the sign unless it's lit up, um, you can't go in there unless it's dark. I don't think a sign is going to really control access there, so for me, it really comes down to are we going to leave the access there or, or are we going to put some kind of restrictive infrastructure on there to limit the type of access or limit the timeframe that you can go down there? I think, uh, you know, my best goes through a strata there, but all those other accesses, four, five, seven, they all go through areas, they're not private property, but they're still, they might as well be stratas. Realistically, they're just going onto the street and then up through on Meadows Drive, so. I guess at the end of the day, I'd probably be more interested with leaving it open with, my only concern around snow, snow removal, I guess, is if we're going to take it on, are we going to take on some additional liability or are we going to leave it with the recycle list? Maintain it and continue to keep it, the liability, which they must be having insurance for, I'm sure. Those are my scattered comments.
Thank you. Um, I have some comments and questions as well, uh, some of which are very good expressed. Um, I think it sounds like we're in agreement that we all would like to keep the access open in some shape or form. I was going to ask as well, if we remove snow on the other, um, town walkways? Um, because I agree, um, if we, if that, if we didn't remove snow on the other walkways, then I would say let's not remove snow here either, but if it's a, an access that we want and we, uh, we're requesting remain open and we remove snow on the other paved walkways, then it doesn't seem too much of a distraction, I think, so it's not so problematic. Uh, I liked what we have on, most of the others, I think, especially the ones going into Meadows area. Uh, just, I don't know, it's called, is it the Bullard or of the post in the, the, the walkway, I mean, it indicates that nothing too big should go through there, and it directs you the way you're supposed to go. Um, and if we were to do something like that in this location, it kind of keeps them all consistent, all of the public accesses, access is consistent along the path. Um, so I would, uh, favor that to offense for sure. Uh, I wouldn't be in favor of offense, I think that makes it too closed off, but, but putting that there, um, I think, uh, just, just makes it look a little bit more official. Um, there were some comments from the delegation last time, uh, concerning both people going up to their properties, and so I think if that really is a concern, uh, then that's what fencing should go, they should put fencing, uh, in between your yards and, and the walkway, if it really is an issue of people entering your yards. Uh, but they, now I need to offer some notes, I think, that I assume that if people, uh, wanted to be their yards private, that's exactly what they're doing, explaining fencing between your yard and walkway. Uh, and my final comment regarding signage, um, I wanted to see a layout last time of all of the entrances to the bike path to see if we had too many or too many in one area, or maybe lacking in some places, I think they're very well laid out. Um, but I personally would like to see a signage strategy for all of the public accesses. There's lots of new people in the area, lots of new people in that area, and I just think that it would be helpful to indicate, um, where you're entering and what it is, so, um, you know, leaving the bike path entering, whatever street you enter, we'll begin to, um, your subdivision, for example. Or leaving, you know, the bike path entering, um, Red Wing, Strata Development, um, tho, those sorts of, that, those sorts of signs, just consistent from one end to the other, indicating that you're leaving the bike path and entering a neighborhood, but then make sure you see the book because you're in, it's all checked. Anyone else? That's a great. Thank you, Madam Chair, I would support, uh, both of those ideas, I really like the idea of the, the, the post there, I think it does sort of make for some continuity. And then the signage, I mean, you're talking about walkability and community and wayfinding and those sorts of things, so I mean, making, it, it makes sense to sort of help people know where they are and, and then if it does say something like, right, you know, like the strata, then it does sort of hopefully help people be mindful of where they are when they're, they're walking through. So, if there's no more questions or comments, Councilwoman?
I was just going to say, the ask is, the staff have enough information to come back, those were some ideas and the costs, potential cost basis.
Would you base on that conversation?
On having any other ideas, just.
All, all, all of the, all of the above, and then we can, choose, so, hey.
I don't know if I wrote down all the, uh, yeah, we can, uh, we can come back with some more ideas, uh, the consistent signage. Uh, we'll have to come up with something, but we are doing that, we were design, um, project this year. It'd be good to see what kind of signage we come up with that, and then that could be added to those at a later date, because then you come up with the same style and wording and fonts and wording notes.
Certainly, I mean, I don't have anything complicated in my mind, really, just like a little sign.
But for, but for each access, you know?
Yeah, for each public access, then it also distinguishes those from the private ones. There was a few of those, right? There was a few.
Yeah, now we can come up with something.
Um, all right, so do we need to have a motion after that conversation? Uh, just to go back to sound for additional information, that's what I think I guess this is going to be, but I think we'll be up to that motion.
Okay, draft a motion, Councilwoman?
So the proposed motion on the board is that Councilor and Staff to develop a consistent signage strategy for all public pedestrians. The ministry walkways to make the bike trails, and to put back to Council, and that the Councilor and Staff was still clearing on the road, so. Uh, we did talk about the Bullards as well, um, as an alternative to, uh, fence. And the only question around some, well, uh, may have had, this is a good one, is, you know, as long as that doesn't change by the, in some way, shape or form.
I don't feel we currently provide snow removal for any private land, right, Sean?
Uh, no.
Yeah, we don't, so I don't know if we want to start that as president, because we do have easement all over the town.
Fair enough. Councilor Price?
Uh, yeah, to the snow removal point, I, I'm, I'm against that part of it, I think, um, you know, we do snow removal on, um, many of those other access points, because they're our town land. It's not, we're not doing them on other ones that are private land, so I don't think we should be doing it.
Councilwoman?
Um, thank you, Madam Chair, I would follow along with that in terms of the proposed motion that Councilor and Staff to develop a consistent signage strategy and Bullards for all public pedestrian walkways to the hike and bike trails, and to report back to Council, I, I'd also like something in there about potentially uh, identifying like the paint that I referred to, like, we've had a bunch of options thrown out, I think if the staff would use the tape, they, this meeting is being reported. That they would find all the different ideas that we threw out and be able to come back with costs for those things. I certainly don't want the second portion in there of the directing staff at this point beyond information.
Okay, so the new proposed motion up there, uh, is that Councilor and Staff to develop a consistent signage strategy and Bullards and painting for all public pedestrian walkways to the hike and bike trails, and to look back to Council. Is that, uh, is it your country? Possibly, go ahead.
Um, I guess, just as you're going to come back, just so that, uh, some, some additional information to consider, as opposed to putting a sign at every entrance, or maybe you can put a sign at every entrance, but I have run into a number of people on hiking bike that are trying to get over to W Village, and they aren't sure where they're at, and you're trying to give them some instructions to be able to go up Bellevue and around that way, and they're, they're wondering where they are, they're new for town, they've been dropped off at a bridge, and they're going to walk down a hiking bike and they're going to meet up somewhere. Um, you know, as far as our, you know, that may be something to discuss with all of our Congress Association, but some kind of a larger sign that would say you are here and give some context to where here is in relation to maybe couple with a lake or other things like that, that would probably be very helpful for people. I, you know, for me, I think we'll just look at the fall, but we'll have to fall.
Richard, Richard, I'm more than a little man.
Yeah.
Yeah, some of the, the recommendation we are going through on that active transportation brand, didn't mention add some strategic locations, maybe have a bigger sign, kind of almost like a map, show where you are, then the town center, you know, the other place, right? You know, strategic locations, so that would incorporate into those wayfinding signs.
Yeah, I think, I mean, that just goes further to what the council is, like, you get on there and not really know where you're getting off, um, especially, you know, it's your first time you have time on, trying to get off something, maybe a sandwich.
So, yeah, I think with all of the things that have gone around, I'd be more than happy to make the motion, and I saw the Director making, putting these notes, both the various things that we've been looking to us for, for us, and then come back to us with some, some ideas and some causes.
Yep.
And, uh.
Am I able to, to speak, I haven't, I have my hand up on the app, but.
The, uh, Department of Element Services speaking, I think. We hear you, but I can't see you.
Okay, that's okay, thank you. No, I just want to say that, you know, there are some discussions about wayfinding throughout, throughout the town and along the hike and bike, but that's going to take quite a bit of time and, and to get, to come back to Council, so in the meantime, what is Council's response to the strata, because the strata is now going to put up a sign that deters the public from entering, so are we going to wait until this all gets sorted out to give the strata an answer, or, or are, is, is Council comfortable not committing to snow clearing, or what is the answer that we can provide to the strata as they've been asking? Thank you.
Well, my answer to that would be, um, as far as snow removal goes, hopefully we have a bit of time to sort that out, hopefully, whenever the next little bit. My opinion only, and anyone else jumping here, I think that they should be asked to move that sign immediately if they were offer us to put it up, and we'll put it up right after meeting the Council, entering the Council, was open to looking at options um, for the path, so I don't know why it went up at all, I don't know why it went up specifically at that time, I think it should be actually moved.
No, I, I would agree as well, I think there's an agreement in place right now, and that agreement hasn't, hasn't expired and hasn't changed, that sign should, should come down.
Councilwoman?
Thank you, if we could get the motion back up on the board before, uh, we'll, we'll, we'll add that in further. And then Council, would that staff be directed to inform the strata associations that the sign must be removed and the agreement is through.
I mean, I think if they see, i- if this proposed motion, if it does pass, is used, um, to formulate some sort of a response in this moment in time to the strata, they'll see that you're continuing to try and figure out the best way to deal with your issue and other potential issues, it's not necessarily a super concrete answer right now, but shows that we're working on it. Okay, so we have a new improved, third time's a charm, proposed motion.
I would be happy to move the motion.
Excellent, thank you. I will second that, I mean. Uh, is there any conversation? Proposed motion? See none, or a question, all in favor? That's Gary. And we're on for grant need policy and budget review, Chief Financial Officer's report attached to the medical address.
Um, thank you. Uh, good. Chair, got to go. Uh, purpose of this.
Could you speak in your mic?
I'm sorry. It's too loud. Uh, thank you, Chair, got to know. The purpose of this report is to review the current grant to date policy and, uh, draft grant need budget events as directed by Council during the financial plan budget discussions. Um, as you can see in the report, there are three, um, entities that are, that have amounts earmarked for um, various projects, and, um, and there's also a history of what, uh, has been dispersed over the last few years at the budget meetings, there was interest to go, to review all of these amounts in the policy, so that's what is coming forward tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, did anybody see anything on the report that jumped out at them, that was specifically wanted to discuss? Councilwoman?
Um, not that there's anything that jumps out, it's just, I, I, I think that the 2021, in terms of the request for grant needs was a bit of an anomaly here, given the circumstances of what we've gone through. Um, um, although it looks like we could easily change, um, what, what we do in terms of the amount that you set aside for grant and you. I'm, I'm, although it looks like we could easily change, um, what, what we do in terms of the amount that you set aside for grant. Uh, when, and, and I know the one grant in eight of the, in twenty twenty one was the, uh. Um, development cost charges, I believe, for the church store, which was a, a big number as part of this. Um, I would be willing to leave it as it is for at least one more year until we get through and see where we're at. I think there may be, um, some kind of demand, so that, uh, we could see come forward in, if, if things loosen up in the next year.
Thank you for those comments. Any other comments?
I would agree with, uh, Council Madas, because there are also some uses of flexibility in the policy, which we exceeded the amount this year for twenty twenty one, so. I don't see it need to change it unless we see trend that Council Madas might consider changing in the future, but because of the flexibility in there. You can. Adapt to the audio here.
Thank you. The only other thing that I notice, um, myself were the, the yearly grants needs, the R S Council and. For, uh, all sorts of things that have been used the last couple of years because of the gatherings, so I imagine those will start getting picked up again, events at that moment. Um, other comments? So we will receive the. The report for information, uh, and the promotion, for the motion.
Sure.
Okay. Wait for the correct. Yes. So, who would second any comments, questions, and all of your? Okay, folks, then, ask, thank you very much. Uh, public question period? Is there any public?
We do have one member of the public, um, if she wishes to speak, she should raise her hand and move her in.
I don't believe she's online anymore.
No, it looks like she's left, so she must be gone.
Okay, so, so with promotion to adjourn, please. So the seconded, all the paper?